...town council to order. As you can see, we're a little light on the, at the table today. Mr. Wilson is out of town traveling and Ms. Hicks is attending to some family illness out of state. So we will take a moment of reflection and I hope you'll keep Ms. Hicks and her, and her family and her thoughts and prayers along with, with, gosh, everybody, everybody. So let's take a moment for, for reflection. Thank you. Join me for the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilman Sam Bishop if he can prepare the pledge for the limitations to the fight in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, actually, I have a motion for an adjustment on the agenda and it's, it's pretty much the entire discussion action by mayor and council members. So that would be Agenda A for the CUP, the B, the rezoning, and C, discussion, signature park names, B, budget resolution, E, budget appropriation for amendment, F, Decola and targeted increases, G, approval to post current draft of the budget and proposed water increase for public hearing to be held maintenance, and H, discussion of potential meeting with Montgomery County Board of Supervisors and potential topics. I move that we table those items.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion, show up to the reasoning?
The reasoning is we have two pivotal members out on council and we're discussing budget, we're setting rates for the budget. There is a rezoning on the table, which, once you approve that, there's no running back and it would be nice to hear from those other council members to see, get their input on it. The other ones are just repetitive. The discussion for the potential park names, I'm sure Mr. Wilson and Ms. Hicks would want to participate in that, I'm sure they have some ideas, and we would just be basically repeating what we discussed here tonight for 20 or 30 minutes and not really come up with a decision because a, a decision is needed on that and a decision soon. Discussion of, this will be repetitive discussion, potential meeting with the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors and potential topics. Again, we would probably spend 20, 30 minutes discussing what we want to discuss with them and Tim and Joanna would want to cover and discuss what we discussed here tonight and add what they would like to discuss with the Board of Supervisors.
Any other comments or suggestions or questions?
Well, I'm just half Christmas turning, A and B, that's resounding, that's part of the request because it's resounding?
Yes.
Well, these were all part of public hearings. Mr. Jenkins?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, then, I, I really, I'm just going to say, of course, it's council's decision, but I do not feel the necessity to, just to amend that whole section. I think there's some people here tonight who want answers on the rezoning requests and the properties that have come before us. I think the, if there's any that I think could possibly wait a week or two weeks is, is the signature park and the discussion of potential meeting with Montgomery County Board of Supervisors about a possible meeting, we've talked about that on and off for years. So this, that's an item that could very easily be struck. So with that, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shodel?
Aye.
Okay. So we will strike everything on the discussion by mayor and council for the next meeting. So if you're here for that, folks, see you next week. Sorry. We have no public hearings tonight. Under the consent agenda, we have approval minutes, February, March 15th and March 22nd. Resolutions authorizing the, to execute agreements with two-part transportation, contract amendment one for personal services, contract for industrial park, set town public hearing, May 24th through just used to be by McNeil Property Management LLC to authorize the town manager to execute task order between town and, of Christiansburg and Euro Valley Regional Commission to administer the Appalachian Regional Commission grant and contract approval for Obersman Ford of Manassas for $149,000 for truck with crane and body for Public Works.
I'm going to make a motion to a purely, because sent Agenda Adams as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion to the second? Any discussions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shodel?
Aye.
Thank you. Introductions and presentations, Director of Public Relations Christina Edney, Dugday Council on Public Relations Department.
Good evening. The mayor introduced me already, but I'm Christina Edney and I'm the Director of Public Relations here with the Town of Christiansburg. It wouldn't be public relations if there wasn't a little bit of show in here. There's also going to be just a small bit of interaction with the crowd, so don't be scared, hang tight, it'll be fun and interesting. So to start off, the Department of Public Relations, we have a couple of key words that we are talking about this year and moving into the next fiscal year, transparent, strategic, and approachable. These are things that we want the town to be seen as, these are things that we want the Department of Public Relations to be seen as. So in the Public Relations Department, we handle external and internal communications. This can include things like the town website, social media. We also handle alert systems like Notify Me Citizens Alert, external and internal newsletters, various other print materials, and then media relations, which will include interviews, pitches, press releases. I'm going to touch on a couple of these, but it looks like we're going to have a shorter meeting tonight, so I'll try to get you guys out of here quick. To go into social media at the bottom is a couple of pictures, are a couple of pictures of social media outlets that we use here with the town. And then I went in a little deeper with the Facebook. You can see how many Facebook followers we have. It's interesting, 72.9% of those followers are women. We did a little digging, a little bit further and found that across the United States in general, the majority of people who use Facebook are women. There are a lot of studies that we looked into. Rainie and I were talking earlier about kind of why that is, but we think just general, the general nature of women and being more communicative, that could be part of it. And then you'll see our reach there. During COVID-19, it was a very interesting time for our department. We saw an increase in engagement with our social media sites and we think that this is because we served as a liaison of public health to the community. So we hope to, of course, continue that. So social media sounds fun, a lot of us have social media, but there's a lot that goes into it. It's more than just being creative. As a department, when we post something on social media, we want to make sure that we're looking at numbers and facts. So we look at analytics, we look at algorithms, of course, we look at design, we want things to look interesting and fun and engaging, but we also try to make sure that we're being intentional with our posting and we also do sponsored ads. This example right here is from a recent sponsored ad that we did. We worked with Andrew on this, it's a call for artists and we had a really good engagement. Let's see if I can figure this out. Down here at the bottom, we put a little bit of money behind this, not too much, and we got, I mean, just really great engagement. And then Andrew, I think, said, how many, 16, potential artists for this, so we're pretty happy with that. We also do quite a bit of print marketing still, so these are some examples of things that we've designed over the past year or more. The Welcome Guide, which is a comprehensive guide to Christiansburg, we have the Budget Summary, which is a snapshot of the annual budget, the Citizen Centric Report, Town Map, and then various other department requests. So we do things for Public Works if they need it, water quality reports, things like that, just a ton of different print materials. Digital marketing is another aspect of the Public Relations Department. We really want to be, moving forward, very people focused. The people in our community, these are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are our families, these are the people we love, these are the people that we work with, and so those are the people that we want to show as much as we can when we're communicating things. So that's something that, moving forward, and they've done a great job of in the past, but we really want to continue to move forward with. Also timely imaging, our town is growing, we want our marketing to grow, so we've been working on getting some updated imagery from various special events from across town and just general things going on in the compute, in the community, whether it be town-sponsored or otherwise. So here's some pictures from the Aquatics Center. This one right here is most recent from our Teen Police Academy that we did, and then here's a look at some other photos. We've got this PD festival that we had, you guys might recognize this gentleman right here, not Santa Claus, the other one. We've got the awesome mermaids at the Aquatics Center, they're so fun. This was from an internal event that we had where we dressed up for Halloween and had a contest to try and build some of that internal morale. This was from a downtown Rocking Main event. This was recent from the storyboard presentation, Fire Parade Downtown, another Rocking Main. This was something that I think we all know happens, or most of us know happens, when they do, every now and then they'll have someone who passes away and our police and fire and rescue will go and pay their respects. And I think that's something that's important to show visually, that we're not a community who just talks about supporting others, we show it. This is a photo at the Aquatics Center and right here is actually a local reporter who came to do a story and we took that group photo, so that was really fun. And then this is at the Christmas parade, so that's some of our Public Works guys and then the Grinch. So another aspect of public relations besides the photos that we've been capturing is trying to build our video database, whatever type of social media or website or really any type of platform you might use to engage others, you are going to hear that video is king right now. So we're trying to take that form of communication and make sure that we can, anytime possible, be able to contribute and share with citizens and you all. So I'm going to play a couple of these, just a couple clips from it in case you missed it. The first one is from the Christiansburg Fire Parade. So I really wanted to get to the picture of the mayor, but I'll let you guys go back and watch that if you're interested. This is from the Police Fall Festival. I said to Andrew earlier, I really like that one because it shows that our kids like to read, but they also like to have a good time, so. This one is most recent, this is from our campaign that we did around Valentine's Day that town council participated in. We had people from across the community submit videos to share what they loved about Christiansburg and it went pretty well. You my girls love Christiansburg, Virginia. We love the children's museum and our favorite is the Aquatics Center. I love Christiansburg. I love Christiansburg, I could tell, the nice people at Christiansburg are beautiful. She loves Christiansburg because of... And then this last one is an internal video that we did. This was, I think, one of the first videos I did when we, when I first started. This was for the HR fair, not HR fair, the HR... Wellness Fair for employees and just a little snapshot into the great benefits that we offer employees. I love that shot with the Public Works shirt on and they obviously loved that service. Oh, there's Terry, yep. So that's just a look at a couple of videos that we've done this year. Our department is also responsible for media relations, so we work to have a really strong relationship with the media. We want to work with news departments, we know that in calm moments, that's great, and we hope that there's never a crisis, but in case there is, we want to make sure that we have a, a strong foundation built there. So we work on pitching good news stories, we work on press releases, interviews if it's asked, we serve as a liaison if they call our department and have a question for Public Works or for aquatics or whatever department that may be. And then these are just a couple of articles or news stories that we've had over the past year or so, so, and over various mediums. This is Virginia Capitol Connections, this is when the governor came. This is a recent article that we submitted about the upcoming new park. And then this is a story about Logan, so one of our citizens who went above and beyond to help out the community and one of the TV stations covered it. And then this was a story at the Aquatics Center that aired on TV, so. Now the fun part, FOIA requests. This is a look at the Freedom of Information Act for our department, it is the right of access to public records. On the left is fiscal year 2021 and from the beginning of the fiscal year until April of that time and around how many requests were in, and then this is from that same time period to now. So as far as FOIA requests go, our department has some goals with FOIA. These aren't necessarily 100% or for certain, these are just things that we're discussing and working towards. So more comprehensive list of FOIA requests. We keep a list internally within the Public Relations Department, but we are recognizing that some people may reach out to other departments for information or for records. So we're trying to make sure that all of those come through our department and some of that likely just comes from new people who are coming in and, you know, maybe they, they don't think to send it to us. So that leads into point number two, which is cross-departmental training on internal FOIA procedures. And then number three, yearly online training for FOIA officers. Right now, it's only required that we do it biannually, but I think that it's really important for what FOIA is and the importance of it, that we make sure that if we're dealing with FOIA, that we're reminding ourselves and staying up to date and making sure that we're on top of any new practices and if there aren't any new practices, then just staying on top of what's required of us. And then the last point is more what I was speaking to about a consideration and that's of a digitized and automated FOIA response system. There are various localities across the state that are using a response system that's more centralized and so it could be, for example, that you would go on the website, submit your FOIA request, the requester would be able to see where in the process that it is, and then let's say me, as the FOIA officer, has to reach out to building for a record, I could reach out to building and they could submit it directly there instead of sending it to me, me sending it to them and just having less hands in the pot for that. And then the last section that I have is on branding. These pictures are all updated with the exception of one. This photo right here is a little bit older, but it's just fantastic. This is Ben, he works in our Public Works Department. This is at the skate park and just a side note, if you guys haven't been to the skate park, it is cool and they are cool kids, so friendly, they have so much fun. It was, we, we had a great time photographing that. This is from the farmer's market at the Recreation Center and this is an officer you may or may not recognize. Don't tell him I used his picture in the slideshow because I think he might not be happy. But there's a couple quotes here before I jump into this really quickly that I wanted to read. "It takes 20 years to build a reputation and five minutes to ruin it. If you think about that, you'll do things differently. A brand for a company is like a reputation for a person. You earn reputation by trying to do hard things well." And then "Identity is a cause, brand is the effect. The strength of the former influences the strength of the latter." So that's Warren Buffett, Jeff Bezos, and the author of The Identity Code. So those are just a couple of things that I'd like you all to keep in mind as we move forward with a branding conversation. So here's the first part of it. This is the audience participation. Does anybody on town council or in the audience know what this is? Pringles? Okay, this is hard, this is not a logo, but these are colors from an organization. BP Subway, John Deere. The answer is John Deere. Google, yep. So the point in showing you this is to show you that before we even put the words on the screen, you know what it is. And even if you guessed BP or Subway at the beginning of this, when someone said John Deere, it clicked that this is John Deere and you knew that this was Google. So branding is so important because what a brand does is helps people identify clearly who they can trust and who they can't. Am I going to trust that McDonald's has good food? Am I going to trust that the Marriott is a good place to stay? Am I going to trust that the town of Christiansburg is a good place for information? And that's what we want to do. We have a great foundation for a brand, let me just be clear, I'm not trying to rebrand, but what I am trying to do is to tighten our brand, to bring it together. So a couple years ago, I believe, and the mayor would maybe know better when, because I think that you might have been a part of this, but this was our original seal and then it moved to this. And then this is our official logo. What we want to do as a Public Relations Department is just make sure that we have consistency in the things that we're pushing out and we've already started working on this with some departments. So, did you know that the town has a recommended font size, color, and style for all messaging? "The Place to Be" is our official tagline. "The Huckleberry" is our primary design element, so it's the element that we use the most. And "The Wayfinding Project" laid foundation for our current brand. The changing of the seal laid a foundation for our current brand. There are a lot of things that the town has done to build on it and we just want to bring it all in a little bit. So "One Way" is pictured on here. This is a signature, an email signature. I don't know if you all have noticed, but a lot of different departments have different email signatures. We want to have some consistency in what we're showing so that people know if they send an email to Councilwoman Hockett or they send an email to myself or Tracy, that they're all reaching someone within the town of Christiansburg and that even though we may be different and individuals and different departments and responsibilities, we're all connected and we're all one and the same and we're all people that the community can trust. So as far as this point about recommended size, color, and style for fonts, these are our recommended font information right here. And so Amy and myself are working on a brand guide and that's part of, you guys may have seen if you've already been through, a request from our department for money to be budgeted for just some branding expertise to make sure that before we move completely forward with this and push this out, that we have science and statistical information to back that because like with anything in the Public Relations Department and I believe across the town in general, we want to be strategic. This is where we're at right now, this is a look at the different departments that we have that have logos. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what we're looking at, the, these are some of our main colors for the town of Christiansburg. But as far as secondary colors are concerned, which a lot of organizations and local government localities have, we haven't brought those out yet, we haven't suggested those necessarily. We want to get some, some expertise, as I mentioned, from a, a branding expert on that. One thing, Amy Southoff, you know her, she's full of great ideas, and she mentioned the possibility of if we develop secondary colors that we could use in our design across the town, that we could have an initiative that has the public help name those colors. A lot of organizations may have like, what's the Virginia Tech maroon? Chicago maroon, so we could have a Huckleberry, you know, however we want to go with that. That's all I got, any questions? That means I was thorough. Thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Next, we have Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated President Ella Travis to present regarding Downtown Christiansburg programs and operations. Ella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks Christina for that presentation, I really enjoyed it, I learned a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having me today. I'm pleased to be with some members of the board and some volunteers to present to you all an organizational update and some plans for 2022. I want to start a little bit about the basics of Downtown Christiansburg. I want to talk a little bit about what we've been up to the past year, but focus most of my time on our vision for this year and what we have planned. So our overall vision for Downtown Christiansburg is to establish the area as a destination, an economically viable central business district, and a vibrant center for culture and community. So our mission is to promote and help progress Downtown Christiansburg to achieve its full potential through public advocacy, sustainable community and governmental partnerships, and dynamic programming and events. We foster these partnerships and create visibility that we believe enhances Christiansburg and Montgomery County for residents and visitors alike. So a few bullet points on who we are. We were founded in 2013, I am the third or fourth president of the organization. We are a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We're an advocate for economic and community development, placemaking, and collaborative planning. We have a volunteer-led grassroots style of organizing and leading. Our programs are supported entirely by volunteers and as a 501(c)(3), we have no members, so we exist for the public good. That's one of the misconceptions about our organization, we're dissimilar to DBI or Montgomery County Chamber, for example, that we really exist to, to celebrate this place and serve the public here. So a little bit about our 2021 accomplishments. I want to start with one of our most fun, dynamic projects, the Great Little Park on Main. So this started with a collaborative grant written by, I think, a few of us in the audience and on council actually now, to rally Southwest Virginia to seed a community-led project. They gave us $3,000 and asked us to query the community and figure out what the community wanted in terms of, of a space. So through lots of collaborative planning and surveys and interviews and...
So through lots of collaborative planning and surveys and interviews and public engagement and meetings, we were able to break ground in 2021 on the Great Little Park on Main. So you'll see in the right corner. Oh, look at that. I learned that from you. We've got our groundbreaking here at the Great Little Park. We have a rendering, a watercolor rendering of the design. This design probably went through three or, I don't know, five or six iterations. The community really wanted a quiet, passive space that they could have coffee, talk with friends, read a book, stop on the way to and from doctor's appointments. They wanted lots of seating. They wanted it to be formal and have lots of beautiful plants. And so we were really excited to have Balter and Associates work with us on this design. You'll see here, we have a party in the park. So because the group decided that we were not going to receive any funds from the town of Christiansburg for this project, it was necessary for us to fundraise pretty significantly. So we had what we called the "Party in the Park" on Give Local Day last year. And we were extremely thrilled that the event was so successful that the director of the Community Foundation came by and we actually were awarded a $1,000 grant because we were the winner of the in-person event award of the year. So Taylor, who is the Vice President of DCI, is actually going to be speaking next week on a panel discussion to talk about how we were so successful with our Party in the Park so that other small nonprofits, organizations can learn about how they can do something similar and bring more money to their organization. And then up here, I have our Volunteer Planting Day. We also received a $5,000 grant from the National Realtors Association, which is a nationally competitive grant. I might be getting those figures wrong. It might have been 4,500 and then 500 from the local association. And so here are some Realtors who all agreed, in addition to giving us money, they needed to plant the trees as well. So here they are planting trees for Phase 1. Moving forward to our downtown videos, we got the memo that videos are really important. And in 2018, we did this. Virginia Tech did a survey of community members. We probably had 200 or 300 responses. And the top three negative attributes of downtown were that it's boring, empty, and small. And we really disagree with that. And we wanted to show the community that we're not boring, empty, but maybe small, but charming. We are, we have pockets of vibrancy in downtown, and we really need to celebrate those. So that was the purpose of these downtown videos. And I'm going to share with you at the end of this presentation the Live, Work, Play video, which kind of ties it all together. But these videos have been really well-received on social media, shared with our partners, and we're excited to find more ways to share them with others. They also were at the I-8177 Montgomery County Tourism Takeover Event. So when the tourism director went down there, he was able to bring some of these videos. So then in addition to seeing all the things Montgomery County has to offer, they were able to see our video as well and learn about downtown. We relaunched our website. This right here is our business directory page, and it's on something called Community Box. So this is not like any other business directory you've seen because it's crowdsourced. So anybody who'd like to can register for a free account on Community Box, and they can tell us about what they'd like to share downtown. So it could be a business owner, a property owner. It could be someone on the Arts Council that's really excited to share all of the public art that we have downtown that would like to put that on the map. And this is just beginning now, and so we're excited to see how it grows and changes. And people can really, again, experience that downtown is not dead or boring. We have a lot going on. It just might take a little bit to find it. Another thing that we completed in 2021 was an action planning study with the Regional Commission. I won't go too into this because it's a little boring action planning, but you'll see we have a lot of our action steps. And a lot include relationships with building owners, relationships with the town, communication. Of course, you see our Pocket Park there. So what are we doing in 2022? Well, a few weeks ago, we held a vision night at Iron Tree Brewing, which we're really excited is in downtown Christiansburg. It was invite-only, maybe invited 20 volunteers and downtown business owners. And we're thrilled to have 50 or 60 people show up and hear about what our vision was for downtown Christiansburg, and it was a really exciting event. We had pizza from Papa John's, beer from Iron Tree. And we talked about community. People got to meet others that they had never met before. We had a lot of, I don't know, mutual friends and common interests. And this was just a really fun event to bring people together and kind of vision what the future of downtown could be and how they could play a part. We had a lot of signups for committees at this event, and we received six applications for Board of Directors. So we're planning on expanding our board with a vote on Thursday night. So we have a few programs of work. The first one I'll talk about is the Great Little Park on Main, Phase 2. So Phase 1, we planted trees, and you'll see these daffodils coming up here. But the community really wants seating. And so really our goal, I think, of Phase, correct me if I'm wrong, Taylor, the goal of Phase 2 is to start thinking about some creative ways to get seating in the park in addition to working with our Master Gardener volunteers and other citizens for plants. So that is Phase 2. And I also wanted to point out, just in the spirit of collaboration, this logo, which was actually designed by two small business owners in collaboration, put out to the community again. And so we're really proud of everything that we have accomplished there. You can see also here, this was a collaborative effort. Lots of folks donated and designed this poster, so it was really fun. So one of Downtown Christiansburg's favorite events, one of the best known in the newer valley, is Chowdown Downtown Food Truck Rodeo. So we are excited for the return of the Food Truck Rodeo in 2022. We have not hosted it since 2019. We're working together with Rachel and Andrew to finalize a date for that, but are hoping for a date in October. I think we're looking at October 1st. But some final plans need to be made for that. But we're really excited to bring the community back downtown. And we'll have more of a committee approach to planning this. So Justin, who is our Treasurer Secretary, will be leading the Food Truck Rodeo Committee. And we have about five or so volunteers who are already really excited about recruiting food trucks, getting new music, seeing ways that we can creatively involve our downtown business owners and property owners. So a lot happening here and a lot of opportunities to get involved. And then the next one I want to share with you is this Economic Vitality Committee, which isn't as jazzy as Food Truck Rodeo. But you might recognize here, this is the four points of the Main Street approach. So Christiansburg is a Virginia Main Street affiliate. I'm really excited to go with some council members and staff to the National Main Street Conference in a few weeks. I think it's going to be incredible. And so as part of this Main Street approach, we have this Economic Vitality section. So with this, we want to expand our economic base. We want to catalyze more investment. And we really want to create a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem in our downtown. And the Main Street approach is a national approach that's been researched and validated across the country and shown to be really significant in terms of grassroots-led community transformation. So at this Visioning Night, I was really thrilled to have lots of business owners in attendance who signed up to be part of the Economic Vitality Committee. We're not sure what that's going to look like or what their plan of work is, but I guess I keep saying I'm excited. But we're going to bring them all together and talk about how they can collaborate with one another, share resources. Though they're not manufacturers, they can share supply chains, you know? And also how they can really participate meaningfully in all of the events that are being hosted downtown because that's really an economic development opportunity. And then the last thing we'll share is, in addition to these main programs of work, there's lots of things going on downtown, and nothing would happen if we didn't work collaboratively with our partners. So here's just some examples of some partnerships that we have for this year. The United Way hosted a wildly successful inaugural trick-or-treat event last year with like hundreds of kids downtown. So we've talked with them about a new event and maybe some discussions about how to improve, you know, safety and crossings, and also from some downtown business owners who want the kids to go to their business. So how can we expand it? The Montgomery Museum, of course, has this new location downtown. And we participated in some focus groups about how that could catalyze economic and community development in our downtown footprint. I think in my consent agenda, somewhere in the agenda, there was a discussion of the downtown community gathering space. And we have a member of our board on that design team. We are also working with Christiansburg High School Parent Group on their Adopt a Senior program. Last year, two years ago, goodness, the COVID years are odd. But essentially, the idea is that everyone adopts an anonymous senior and gives them a gift, sort of like a $10 gift that shows, you know, that the community cares about them. And so last year, what we did was we asked all of the businesses to participate and donate items for a little bag. And we had a cute card that said, you know, "Dear Senior, wherever you go, always know that you have a home in Christiansburg." And so we're going to do that again this year because we thought that was a really great way to bring the community together and show the seniors that we care about them and we'd like them to stay. And the last partner, of course, is the town of Christiansburg. So I already mentioned, I'm going to be talking with Rachel next week about how we can work together with the Rockin' Main Street event and other downtown events, and then also attending the Main Street Conference. So with that, I'd like to ask Andrew to play a short video.
This is where we live. This is where we hang out. This is where we play. Where we connect with people.
It was pretty natural to me. I wanted to be downtown. It's a rural, environmental area. He had access to cultural and athletic and educational amenities that Christiansburg would have.
I've lived in Christiansburg my entire life. Christiansburg is a cool place because depending on what kind of feel you want where you live, there's kind of different neighborhoods, and they're all a little bit different.
There is a abundance of housing here, with all your store kinds and beer homes. We even have some townhomes, dark apartments, but they won't be distant.
Really cool to see all the small businesses and just knowing that you have everything that you think you need within like a mile, two mile radius is pretty awesome. It's a fantastic place to live. It's very convenient. There's places to eat, coffee shops. We have a brewery now.
What brought me downtown? Opportunity. What brought me downtown? Available space. What brought me downtown? We're growing relationships with people.
I do spend most of my time here. A lot of times, I'll run in Grand Blunt at Mockingbird, Great Road. Those have been great places. It's great. I saw people that I know from here, good business from here.
I would say there are jobs available. There are businesses that are hiring. We're blessed to have totally nice, local, mom-and-pop restaurants.
It's been pretty cool coming from a really tight-knit community to another really tight-knit community where like everybody's actually interested in what you do, in who you are, and kind of just want to be active and involved in each other's lives. Live, work, order.
Get downtown.
And thank you to Bowling Creative Media and the town of Christiansburg for that video. Are there any questions?
Why are you three? I actually think more than our own people like the scene.
I'll sign you up for the next video.
He's good, right? Okay. Any questions?
Any comments? I enjoyed it. Thank you. I'm watching the food truck coming back. Food trucks.
Yes.
I've heard a lot of comments about that. People employed outside of Christiansburg who are waiting for that to come back.
Yes, we're excited too. Thank you all for your support and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next is our citizen comment section. If you'd like to address council, please come with a microphone, your name and address, and limit your comments, one to the chair and for three minutes.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Reggie Street. Watching that presentation by Christina, your Public Affairs Officer. I would have a recommendation for council. Get out of that tourism agreement that you're in because her and her predecessor, Melissa Powell, had done more to promote the town tourism-wise than that thing has ever done. They mainly, from what I've seen, have concentrated on Blacksburg. You know, you're spending over $100,000 a year. Pay her more, hire a new assistant. And you've seen the videos she can create. She has a degree in it. She used to work for a news station. I don't understand why we're wasting money on this regional tourism thing that, from what I've seen, does little to nothing for this town for a whole lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else to address council? Hearing none, I will close the citizens' comments, committee reports. Mr. Bishop, I think you had something to...
I do have. Last Wednesday, the Aquatic Center Advisory Board had their meeting. And during that meeting, they discussed the possibility of raising the one-day pass fee. It's currently $5. They're looking to increase that to $6. And what's going to bring it to council tonight? So we can just think about it for a couple of weeks and hopefully be back on the agenda in a couple of weeks, and we decide yes or no. And this will, if it's approved, it's only going to be the second increase since the Aquatic Center has been open. And that's for the day pass only.
This went through the commission. The commission said yeah.
The advisory board?
The advisory board pushed it to...
Yes, they said she has, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Any other committee reports tonight?
I've got one from the rec, just briefly. Other than the park naming, we covered that, and that's what we'll be looking at here in the next few weeks, hopefully. Casey, the farmer's market is going to be at the rec. There's going to be a few Rockin' on Main coming up through fall and summer. I got Brad back there, so...
Yeah, we'll have one in May, one in June, and then again September, October. Then it's what I've been saying, July.
All right. And then participation in youth sports is still going well. It's always, always like to see the, Brad, what Brad does, he delivers a monthly report to the rec commission. And, you know, one of the things I do notice is we still have the meal deliveries for seniors. That's still going on, which I think is an important part, even now, since we're not fully out of the epidemic. But, you know, our youth is still participating, but the bathrooms are still being renovated, right?
That's right.
So when are they supposed to be done?
Prior to the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, on town, early June.
All right. And that's it for now.
Next?
Nothing.
The Bike Way/Walkway Committee met April 1st. And the bikes that have been in the bike share program have been undergoing some maintenance, but that maintenance is wrapping up. And I've already seen some of those bikes returning to the stations, so we're really excited. I think, I wrote down that there was going to be 47 beginning of this month return to those stations. So the bike share is opening up just in time for the beautiful weather, so we're really excited about that.
Brett, I wanted to comment, and I can do, I'll do it now while you're here. The event this past Saturday night, the spring event, was wonderful. Lot of, lot of good compliments throughout on it. But I believe if y'all pushed it hard enough, you could probably do a beach fest sometime in there. That's some, there are a lot of people who want to do a beach fest, Brett, so go do some thinking. A little bit warmer weather, yeah.
We already have that plan, Ben. We beat them to it.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
I'll just mention the Rockin' Main events that we have planned coming up are May 14th and June 11th.
May 14th, June 11th, okay.
We have a couple of events planned in the follow-ups.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Andrew, you got anything? Reed?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mike, I know you're handing me that. I've just, I've got a couple of questions about part of us going into closed session. Reed, have you reviewed what we're going to be discussing, discussing tonight?
Not subjectively, but just what's on the agenda.
My curiosity is, it's on College Street, or College, yeah. It's College Street, so obviously it's with the stormwater, correct, Randy? And typically, when we go into closed session, it's discussion of disposition of public-held property or discussion in open meeting when adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiate the strategy of the public body. Is there any really fear of somebody coming through and outbidding us for this capital improvement we're going to do for these few houses?
I don't think there's any danger of anybody trying to do the project for the town. I don't think that's a danger. I think the possibility of somebody buying those properties between now and then is a real... realistic possibility.
Okay. All right. And are you going, are we going to be looking for action tonight on this?
I don't, I don't anticipate that.
Okay, all right. So, I'll move to certify that the Town Council of the Town of Christiansburg meeting, what, am I reading the right? Okay, I request for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential acquisition of property in the College Street area for a stormwater management area. It's a move.
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Sher Walter?
Aye.
As unanimously spoke. We will go into closed session. I'll call it back to order in about five minutes, three, four minutes after this takes a turn. We are back into open meeting. Now, we're back in open meeting. Mr. Sherlock?
I move to certify that the Town Council of the Town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting. In the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
That is a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Sher Walter?
Aye.
That is four, and we are not going to take any action on the matter as discussed tonight. Is there any, let me, let me ask you this, Randy. The delaying of the public hearings and things, does that affect, does that cause any problems?
Well, they aren't public hearings. They'd be votes on those items.
Well, yeah, but I mean, is, can we still do it? I guess my question is, if we assume, assuming we pass these increases, does that give? Well, they take, they will take effect.
Whenever Town Council wants them to take effect.
But I do know there's quite a bit of work involved by the Finance Department getting these things set up.
Staff, and from talking to finance, basically, the amount of work involved, because you would have to do two sets of data entry, so they would prefer that we did the COLA and the MIRIT increases at the same time if we're going to do them.
Okay, very good. But.
But they'd hate to do that.
The next meeting is not going to make or break us, is that correct?
It's up, like I say, it's strictly at Town Council's discretion.
I understand that, but an action, if we're going to do anything, we need to take that action next week, next meeting.
Again, you know, that's up to, if Town Council wants that.
Forget it. We're adjourned. Okay.